That's a forty feet. To Mark's point, that's from the eighteen hundreds. That was there far, far before I was ever around. And my final comment is, is if there are negative comments to the Three Water Street project that are are influencing your decision to make these changes going forward. I would suggest that you get them and post them and let's have a lively debate. Either with the other, you know, members of the town or the people making the comments. About what the best path going forward is. I mean, it's a democracy. We live in a small town and I don't think anyone's upset or angry about it, but I think we should be able to defend our stances and like any committee of two sides. So, you know, if they do exist, if Diane, if you have comments, if anyone else does, like, let's bring them forward and let's see both sides of it. That's all I have.
And I do not see any more raised hands.
Proceed on to old business items zoning regulation amendment pre-application discussion. Should we turn this over to Diane for walking us through the proposed changes? And I guess we start with item thirteen is the first item. Which happens to be building.
Am I sharing? You are. Okay, okay. What we left off on is number twelve, item number twelve. And if you have your, if you have your text in front of you, you can get on number twelve, which is the basically the table. For all the different standards within the zone. So, just to reiterate, we were talking about height and we came up with some agreement on some of the items with the height. But we didn't come up with an agreement on what the maximum height should be in basically the MDD zone, which is Mystic. But as we were talking last time, since these new regulations were adopted. And since there were one or two projects or three projects in the downtown area. We noticed that the interpretations that were happening for the new regulations. Basically, we're not consistent with either what, how regulations were interpreted previously or how we thought they were going to be interpreted from a staff standpoint by writing these regulations. A lot of times when you write regulations, you try to get the best and clearest language you you can. And I know the zoning commission reiterated that a number of times when we were writing through, writing these regulations. But sometimes even one word or two word makes a difference in how a zoning official wouldn't, will interpret the regulations. So, we wanted to come back and make everything pretty clear as far as the different items. And especially when we came to height. There were some interpretations that we wanted to go back and look at. One of the things on this, on note number one. Let's see. Oh, the other thing was before we started on all these notes is we looked at the definitions of height and we spent a lot of time on the definition of height. And Jeff sent us some diagrams. That we're going to make basically look at and incorporate some of his diagrams into changing the diagrams in the zoning regulations to make them clearer. So we'll come back with you with some diagram, different diagrams for the height. We also talked about A-frames and where you measure A-frames from. And so we'll be changing that height measurement for A-frames. We discussed Mansard roofs and how you measure Mansard roofs. And we heard some comments on potentially giving developers a little higher height if they, if they put in a Mansard roof instead of a flat roof. I've been looking at a number of different towns as far as how they measure Mansard roofs. Most of them measure them to the top like we do. Some of them measure them to the deck. And so I'm not sure what to do in that case as far as Mansard roofs and where you want to measure to. Where the height should be measured to with a Mansard roof. So those are, that's something that we still need to discuss. We did go through scope, we went through these notes and one of the things we dealt with was the common lot line agreement. We don't want to get rid of the common lot line agreement. And I think you agreed you can use the common lot line agreement to build your building right to a zero lot line. But you can't use the common lot line agreement to then increase the height of your roof. Or the height of your building by moving in from the zero lot line. So that was the one thing we discussed and I think you all agree to that. That yes, you can still use a common lot line agreement. You just can't then move in from the property line. And get extra height because you've moved five feet or four feet or whatever in from the property line. So that'll be cleared up in in one and also in two. I think we discussed that. Let's see. And then we also talked about using. We had talked about in the thirty feet, we had talked about was just one of the ones, one of the heights that staff put out there. The main thing we're concerned about is making it really clear in all the districts in the town as, as how you measure height. And taking away these these items that if you do this, you get extra height. If you do this, you get, you know, additional height. And so we wanted in downtown Mystic to come up with a clear height definition. And so that, that everybody's working on the same page, whether it's thirty feet, thirty-five feet, forty feet. That's up for you to decide. One of the things we thought when we went to this measuring. Getting, giving extra height in the flood zone. To people if they build to the flood standards. When we wrote this, I thought it was really clear. I worked with the building official and the zoning official at that point and to seem that it seemed to be clear to them. But when it went to interpretation to a, to developing projects down there, it wasn't clear at all. So we decided, well, maybe we should make it clearer so that we're just giving everybody five feet additional height from average finish grade. And not measuring it from the base flood elevation plus. Again, some of the, some of the properties in downtown Mystic aren't in the flood zone. So they wouldn't be measuring from base flood elevation plus. So it doesn't put everybody on even playing field for the downtown Mystic area. When you, when the commission discussed it last time. There was a lot of discussion about only allowing the extra five feet if you're raising an existing structure to get out of the flood zone. If you're not raising an existing structure and you're building from new, then you did not want to allow them to get the extra five feet. So that's where we are. That's where we basically stopped at this point. So, I don't know what the commission wants to discuss on that. Mainly, I think we want to hear from you tonight. What do you think the maximum height should be in Mystic? I do have a screen, I do have a we went and measured a lot of the newer buildings in Mystic as far as from the plans. Can everybody see that? It's a list of different buildings, taking from, taken from the plans. We're still on the regulations, Diane. You can stop the share and do. You see it now? All right. I'm sorry. I had to take a picture of it because I couldn't, my computer wasn't working right. So Central Hall, it's a flat roof. It's forty-six feet to the top of the building and everything is all measured from average finish grade. How I measured it here. So it's
that at all? I can't read it.
Okay, hold on.
I don't know if anyone else is having a problem.
Yes.
That's better. Okay, thank you.
So, Central Hall, forty-six feet to the top of the flat building and then three and a half feet of the screening. So the the height basically is forty-nine point five feet. Again, it might, I might be or one or two feet off, but this is what we, we have to look at. Bravo, bravo. That's on the Stonington side of Mystic. It's the new, new building on that side. It does, it's basically a Mansard roof that they, they designed there. It's thirty-five feet to the top of the building and then three foot of screening. So that's about thirty-eight feet. For that building with the screening, with the rooftop screening. SIF, the original building, I didn't do any of the new built, the new structure because I think everything is below the existing building. But the original building, it's a gable roof and that's thirty-two feet to measure to the mid level of the roof, which is how you would measure a gable roof based on our height. So that's SIF. Oyster Club is gable and that new building, they raised up the roof on that. And that's twenty-five foot height measured to the mid level of the roof. Pizzetta is also gable. The highest point is thirty feet and that's measured to the mid level of the roof. And then Three Water Street, it's a Mansard roof. I measured it from average finish grade and not from base flood elevation plus one. So it's forty-five feet in the front. From the average finish grade to the top and in the back, it's about forty-eight feet. From the back to the top of the building. So that would be a basically an average of forty-six point five feet. For the building from average finish grade. And then if you add the three foot screen, the way we typically use the screen to measure height, that would be forty-nine point five feet total. So basically the same as Central Hall. The other older buildings, you know, they were built as factories. So they're basically tall buildings. They weren't. I don't think they were built as residential structures, even though they are now. Main block is about fifty feet. Powerhouse, I think is around fifty-one feet and then Randall's Wharf is a little less than fifty feet. So those are, you had, you also have a number of older structures throughout the town. Mainly smaller structures, I'd say, within the twenty-five to thirty-five foot range. So that gives you an estimate of some of the buildings. So if you want, if we want to stop here and get some comments. On the height.
Does anyone have comments?
Yes. Couple of comments and then I want to be able to share a screen. So you want to get out of your shared screen? Is that, I guess one of the questions we have is that what we want to accomplish with a height limitation. Now, one of the commentators said, oh yes, they were developed for fire things. Well, they were also developed to prevent blocking out the sun entirely. I mean, the shape of the Empire State Building. It was already too top, too tall for anybody's fire equipment. It tapered back as you went higher. So that you have a little bit of sun left and it didn't really work because it was too tall. But that was the kind of goal of it. So what we need to think of is what are we trying to, what are we trying to accomplish with the total height? If we're not building just cubes on top of each other. Let me just share what I've got here. Because I think what we, we are thinking about is the down here. And share. You, you seeing that now?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's downtown Stonington. That's a borough. And what somebody was mentioning was about the angle that you see out of and it's a much narrower street and it's got some three-story homes on here. And so it's, and lower things on the other side. And it's certainly charming and certainly fine and it's not a bad thing, but it's a little bit closed in for us. But if we're, if one of the things that we're looking at is just keeping the dimensions kind of like that and allowing sun to come in. You can see this is all in shade. I don't know what time of day that is. But that's kind of the way it is both directions. Here you have its three stories on either, three stories on the right side and two and a half or three stories on the left side. If we go to downtown Mystic now. And this is about the way it is right now. And it's getting awfully tall back here as we've all mentioned before. These two buildings on the right are already three-story buildings, but just they're low three-story buildings. And one thing I thought of is that if I look at these three-story buildings or the two-story buildings on the left. I don't know or necessarily care from the street level, what's going on ten feet back from the edge of the roof? I can't see it. It won't block any sunlight. The nature of the feel of the street will be identical. So how tall it is in the penthouse that's set back in the street. To me is, is, has nothing to do with what we're doing at street level. Has nothing to do with the nature of the town. We already are pretty good about having gable roofs. As you see, the two buildings kind of farther there in the back on the left side and several on the right side there too. Is they have much less an impact. So maybe what we're already talking about is giving you half credit. For what's there is probably about the right thing. It's not a whole story, but we can encourage that. You go to a Mansard and that's why I was saying if a Mansard is steep enough and back far enough. So from the street level, you don't see it. Maybe it doesn't matter to us. Because unless I've got a four-story building just behind it and it's blocking the view, it's not really an issue except for at a distance. I sketched up this thing. Here's downtown Mystic if it goes three stories. But you can't do in thirty feet. You need more than thirty feet. Everything except for Mystic Ice Cream in the back, which you actually can't make out here. Actually, I did lift that one up too in this sketch. Didn't do the one on left here, but you'll see I just lifted up the other buildings. Makes an extra story. And it certainly retains the exact nature we're looking for. It doesn't look overwhelming. They're certainly not as high as Central Hall there. And again, with each one of these buildings, if in fact, five feet back or ten feet, certainly ten feet back from the edge of the building. It had a penthouse or another roof line or something like that that went up. Name a number, any ten feet more, we wouldn't care from this streetscape. The streetscape would be unchanged. So I think we need to just be wary about just saying absolute height versus what the height is at the street. The kind of same setback thing that they came up in New York for wildly different reasons. Applies here and I think it's what everyone's afraid of. Three Water Street, they started to, if you're down there at the sidewalk, it actually accomplishes that. In fact, if the Mansard had a a steeper slope if it was farther down, you would not see that top floor from the street level. We, I don't think we'd mind. I don't mind now, but I'm thinking, I don't think many people would realize it. They look at the elevation plan and say, oh, this is horrible. It's fifty feet tall. And if you, if you're on the street level and you look up and it looks like it's forty feet tall or thirty-five feet tall, who cares? You might want to do the same thing on all sides from the parking lot view. Maybe you want to do the same thing on that. On that building from the back and from the side, you see it's full vertical height, which I think is a little alarming. It should have had some feature that reduced the height on all sides. But I kind of, kind of go along with the idea that I don't want to over control absolute height. Where it doesn't affect what we see at the street. And what we see at the street, I think, lives perfectly well at three stories, which is probably takes thirty-five feet to do. And so long as you step it back away from the street. Going up considerably higher, maybe not up to fifty feet, but going up considerably higher, I don't think would be a problem at all and might appease development issues. I kind of feel for people to try and develop these sites and you can only build so much. On the other hand, I also want to remind people, we agreed, we're not trying to make downtown Mystic into downtown Grotton. So I don't have any problem with stifling some development in Mystic. For fear that this will ruin the talent Grotton's investment. This isn't where we want to do downtown rotten. This is a limited area of town. And we have some wildly less areas of town. We like to be able to push things to for other businesses. So I don't want to overshoot what we can accomplish here when we've got other places in town to develop.
Anything else, Hal?
I think that's all.
Does anyone else have any comments?
I'm sure this is Kevin Fisto, if I can make a few comments. So, um. Couple of things that people had stated, of course, that there needs to be some sort of height restriction. You know, having worked in the deep state of Washington DC for the last twenty-five years. Their height is, you know, the width of the road in front of them plus twenty feet. So you never see anything larger than, you know, eleven stories. So it was a, a great moderation as far as the development is concerned. Plus they don't want anything too high to the White House. So when we in Mystic say, we don't want, we want a good moderate moderated height. All the letters received, all, all the attendees that I've heard speak here. And there was a lot of imprecision as far as a lot of those letters, but it was all about height. But if you look at all the height that Diane just spoke to, there's really nothing more than fifty feet in, in any of those instances. So if we follow how thinking, we are, we want, you know, the greatest impact. And sometimes the impact doesn't matter based on the shape. And we take a look at Diane's quantitative data, then what we have right now from a height standpoint, just needs more precision. And that's, I think, where this started from. It wasn't a matter of changing it and scaling it back. So we don't have any more development. It was just the precision between any building inspector who can interpret the regulation in what we have as far as the regulation. So if people agree, our, our regulation that we had was good and what Diane has provided here. We just have to make, ensure that it is clean across all areas of how we judge it in the template because measurement is good. That's all I have, Jeff.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, if I could just add in. I, I agree with what Kevin was saying with, that we just need to dial it in a little better. But one of the aspects of size that I think is being missed is that we have you know, a requirement and I always go back to the purpose of our zoning regulations. And in, in four places, there are listed, you know, lessening congestion in the streets. Preventing the overcrowding of land, avoiding undue concentration of population. Regulating and limiting the height and bulk of buildings. That's, you know, page one. So, I think we do have to, you know, be smart about it. But I like Diane's analysis in that, you know, fifty feet is, is probably you know, not a, a horrible height when you, when you look at some of the buildings downtown that exist today. But, you know, just to toss it out and say that, you know, this is not a, this is not a necessary constraint we need to do. I think we, we'd be remiss in our, in our job as commissioners. But what number there is, I don't know. That, I mean, that's, I guess we can tweak that in.
Anyone else have anything?
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak just briefly. So the only thing that I would, I mean, I would say is that the regulations as they were written and what, I think what staff and, and the zoning commission expected weren't interpreted by developers in the same way, from what I could gather. And so that was also went to public hearing. And so I, I think that that people who commented on it the last time were commenting on it with the thought that how staff interpreted the last time. And, and so just keep that in mind. And then also I would be concerned about sprawl, which might occur if development is curtailed too much and people want to still, you know, get into the downtown Mystic area and that. You know, I don't know how much it would move, but you know, if other areas of that MDD started to be developed. Just a thought, that's all. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I had, I have a few comments as a soup. I don't exact, I don't exactly agree with the sightline analysis. I understand the importance of sunlight, especially having lived in Manhattan and all, but sightline, if you're coming down Route one and two Mystic. And if you're looking, you know, across the old village and you're seeing nothing but penthouses on top of every new higher building. That seems not maybe exactly what we're shooting for here. And sometimes if you're on, in certain places in that area, because it's not flat and all these other things. I think it's, it's not going to be that easy of a one, of something to manage and make fair either. And I think one of the basic questions is, do we really want walls down there? Because I do think that's what it will look like if we go to a central hall type. Height on a lot of buildings, then all of a sudden, the look of the place is going to be very different. Not that everybody's going to do that, but you don't know. They have maybe the possibility to. And it's kind of like, is that going to be good for business if all of a sudden we have like a bunch of cubes down there? With penthouses on top. So I, I think this needs a lot more analysis. Make sure we're getting what we think we want. That's it. Thanks.
Anyone else? I just had a little it said, I don't know, it's almost impossible to come up with just a finite number. And I think what makes Mystic look good is the variety of different buildings, different heights. And unfortunately, you have the Gilbert Building opposite of Central Hall, which we're not both there at the same time and you're building. both there at the same time, and you're building it into a canyon. I, I don't think it's good to have buildings that high eat on both sides of the street that are long and expansive, street sideways. And I don't know how you control, control variety of building height. Unless you just say that's an objective and leave the, the height at a more reasonable level or maybe three stories rather than just a specific number of feet. Which might create some variety in itself. And just say you can't have a building over three stories. Just some thoughts. Perhaps we should not come up with a finite answer tonight and give it some more thought or have a little bit more study of what we really want to do with building height. Cause we're just talking the MDD, which is sort of the unique area. And put, put it on Diane's list for tomorrow.
Well, um, we can, I think we can give it some thought from a staff standpoint. We can take all your comments and take consideration and, you know, rework, rework their the regs a little and see, you know, go from there.
Yes, some of what you have may be okay. It's just if it's a finite number.
Yeah, it's the problem is once you get into stories, there's, that's more interpretive. As what's a story and what's not a story, so, um.
But on purpose to maybe force difference in height. And variety.
Right, but that would, that would encompass a lot of interpretation from the building and zoning official as far as what's considered a story and what's not. You get into how I think Michael Kane and maybe Halzad can understand that as far as, you know, when's an attic a story? When's the basement a story? And, and everything like that, it gets, it gets a little more confusing. Um, it's.
Well, or can you put objectives in and just say a special permits required over a certain height?
We, we could do that, that. So that's a way of looking at this. Um, the other thing you need to look at is it's not only the streetscape in downtown Mystic, you're in a cam zone. So it's basically you're, you're looking at the buildings from, from the water's edge also. So you're looking at that state from, for the buildings down there.
Well, it's, yeah.
So there's a lot of things playing in. You're looking at the historic stuff. I, I agree with a lot of people that the building on Three Water Street, Peter Springsteen did an excellent job as far as the architecture. But Peter Springsteen doesn't design every building down there. And there's the, you know, there's other good architects that are designing buildings down there, but it could be somebody that, yeah.
Isn't Jeff's, what Jeff's comment is, it's actually pretty smart. If we kept the same regulation, refine it a little bit and everything beyond that is a special permit. Doesn't that offer up even to a developer, the ability to say, I get it. And we certainly understand it, right?
Right.
A little flexibility.
Right. So maybe you go, I don't know, you, maybe you go 35 feet and everything above that's a special permit or something like that. Um, that gives people options.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, what, what would a special permit be based on?
It would be based on, as far as what, as far as impacts to the adjacent neighbors, impacts to the neighborhood, um, visual, light and air, uh, there you could, it could be based on a lot of different things. There's, there's requirements you have to meet for, for the special permit and there has to be findings.
And, and a special permit is going to give you a lot more power to, um, to condition things, um, to maybe say you don't like it at 45 feet, but 42 is okay.
And it's a public hearing too, right?
Exactly, a public hearing.
I like what Sue had, had remarked about the, um, the variety in the heights. And that's what gives the downtown Mystic area its character.
Right.
There is that variety of heights, whether they be gable, like Hal was showing when it was hired. Well, yeah, yeah, that does give a little bit of character to it if you kept the cables. But what if the guy wants to renovate and make that top part flat roof? And then everything's flat roof and you've lost, lost the variety and character. So, okay, I think I'm understanding better what the special permit could do, and I think that's probably a good idea.
I guess, um, just one concern I would have is I think special permits, I felt overall worked really well. Um, with the zoning commission, we certainly considered them a lot. In this case, where maybe you have a lot of people basically wanting, um, special permits. Um, I'm not sure legally how you're going to be able to tell one person, you know, oh gee, you can't do this because, um, you're blocking, you know, five more rays of sunlight here or something. I mean, how's this really going to work that it's not seen as being something capricious, you know? That'd be my only concern. I mean, special permits, I think have worked really well over, like I said, overall for a lot of different situations. In this situation, I don't think, well, I don't know. But maybe, um, maybe if staff has some research or something on this, or anybody else has done a similar thing. Um, did it work? Or if not, why not? So it'd be of interest to know that.
Wouldn't we just have to be very careful when we do a special permit? We just have to be very careful about how we state what it is we're doing, because each one that we did will then have repercussion for everyone after that. So we just need to make sure we've documented exactly why we did it and exactly how this applies to everything else after that. We aren't going to be in that position for the rest of town if we do this. And maybe we're safe if we just say, hey, if we're, this is the limitations we want to put on this special permit. Then that's got to be it for every other special permit until the zoning changes.
Yeah, it's not so much that, because I think we're very good about document and everything, but it's kind of like, um, probably more, everybody who's wants a special permit going to want similar things. And are we really going to end up with a variety? So, you know, if you have 10 owners in a row that all want to, uh, special permit for going up to 50 feet, then we're not going to meet our objective. Probably, it's a possibility, we won't.
One of the things we can say in the special permit is no, you can't do exactly what you did there, because that's exactly what your neighbor to the right did.
No, that's true.
And once we've done that, then variations is insured. It's one of our things that we're requiring.
Well, you could make, you could also make special findings for the height. You have to meet the special permit findings, plus you have to meet these findings. One could be, um, if you went into what Halzad was saying about from the street level, you can, you know, it's got to be a certain height at that street level. If they want to go in further and they want to raise it up to 40 feet, 45 feet or whatever. Um, then they have to get the special permit of. Then you can also look at, one of the things the old regulations did. And this is how they measured height in the old regulations. It was a maximum of 25 feet, which was the basic height. Uh, and you could go up to 40 feet, but it was bait, the 40 feet was based on not coming inward from the setback, from the sideline, from your property lines. Um, but it was based on reducing your percent building coverage on the site. So there was a maximum building coverage allowed of 65% down there. And for every 10% you reduced from the 75, from the 65 feet. From the 65%, I'm sorry, um, you could go up five feet in height. So you, you could get up to a maximum of 40 feet by decreasing your percent of building coverage, which means you gave more light and air around the building, but you raised the building a little.
Yeah. And Deb, I thought that that was the question that I asked when we were talking about Three Water Street. And that they were using the fact that they could go up in height based on the regulations, but because there was a zero setback, it started right in street, right at the sidewalk. Is that, am I saying that right?
It started at the property lines. Um, yeah, the so that they were under the new regulations, right? Yes, they were, yes. The new regulations have zero setback at their property, at the front property line.
Right, so the.
So they would have to move in the five feet or whatever they had to move in to go up the height. But the previously, we didn't count those zero, those property line agreements as being able to go up to the additional height. We didn't say you could start at zero and then come in and go up to the additional height.
So isn't, isn't the whole point to clarify that if you have a zero setback, you cannot use that particular aspect of the, the regs?
If you know, if you, if you're doing zero lot line, zero setback based on a lot line agreement. Downtown, the zero, you can, you can, oh, you can go to zero at the front property line automatically right now.
Right, but you shouldn't be able to use the additional heights.
No, that was side to side, zeros line of your neighbors.
Right, on the sides, on the side property lines, there's zero lot line agreements. So.
But do you have a, I don't think we should be making the decision tonight because it's so so many different alternates proposed. Do you have enough where maybe you could come up with another proposal or a couple of?
Sure, yeah, maybe a couple of proposals.
Maybe not in a lot of details, but just the at least.
Right. Right.
What we might be able to develop further. Cause it's a pretty complex issue and make it with all. Without having some more details and study.
So I think, um, you want to move on?
Yes, I'd like. Otherwise it would be here till tomorrow.
All right, so if we go to number 13, height limitations and requirements, um. This is just, this is just basically rewording this to make it clearer. Um, but the other, the only other thing we did differently in this is we made sure that rooftops screening, rooftop equipment and screening was included in the section. So that, um, basically the section says you measure the height the way it says in that previous table we were looking at. But these are some of the exceptions to that height measurement. And one of the exceptions is if these things such as spirals, cupolas, towers, um, flagpoles, penthouses, and we added rooftop equipment and screening. Um, if it's not used for human habitation and if it's less than 10% of the aggregate of the building area. You can go up to a maximum of 10 additional feet. So basically it's the same as it, it is now. It's just reworded a little differently to make it clearer and to add that rooftop equipment and screening. And then, um.
Why, just one question on that. Why is the word penthouse used if it's not for human habitation?
Yeah, that was my question too.
Penthouses, I, I guess. Is, can penthouse be someplace where you just go up and it's not, it's not heated?
It's just a structure on top of the top of the building. It has an official definition somewhere. I looked at, I can look at these before. And I don't know if I got it out of a dictionary or somewhere else. I think it might've been that. It, it's not necessarily a livable place on top of a skyscraper.
Okay. I mean, I can look at that to make sure.
No, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's in the building code too.
Oh, maybe that's.
That's where we got it from and it's not necessarily for human habitation.
Yeah, it's the way it's worded here is acceptable, acceptable definition.
You say not necessarily, but could it be?
No, I think, no, it could, but under this regulation, it says not meant for human habitation.
That, that would have to be critical. The definition.
Oh, okay. I see that. I see.
If you Google it, it's an apartment. The first definition is an apartment on the top floor and the second one is a shelter. That's it. So it's our definition that matters though, I believe.
Exactly. So maybe we will need to do that at a definition.
Yeah, I would throw that in the definition section.
Mechanical engineers talk about a mechanical penthouse. That's in their language. It's a normal thing too, so.
Okay.
Definition, we need to put it in there.
That, that structure on the top of Central Hall, I mean, not Central Hall, main block. There's some kind of structure up there. I don't think it's an apartment, but it's this in, right in the middle of it, there's this little extra structure, elevator shaft. It could be an elevator shaft. Maybe that's it.
The machinery for the elevators on top of the shafts, that's what that is.
But there's a, a structure on the top of, uh, Three Water Street that really meets that definition.
Right, and they had, that was, they calculated that as less than 10% of the, um, building area.
Oh, but I meant, I meant it as a penalty. We call that a penthouse.
Right, or.
Non-inhabitable space.
Right.
Those non-inhabitable struck space on top.
Right, it's got to be non-inhabitable. So basically, um, that's just going through that of.
Yeah, the top of page 418, Diane. On your text.
Yeah.
It was said screening. Should you put after the talks fence wall? Should you put screening after that just to make sure that if you have some other type of screening that.
Perimeter of the fenced wall screening.
Yeah, well, you'd sort of talk about it in an earlier thing.
Yeah.
You know, there may be others thing that people would call a fence, something other than a fence or a wall is, is screening. Well, that's what you intend, I believe, by looking at this.
Oh, okay. Yes.
That enclosed area.
Right, yes.
Just doesn't try to misconstrue it.
Let's see. All these other exceptions basically are the same as they're just cleaned up a little as far as rewriting them. Um, the only thing on number five here, this was what we had before as far as how you measured the elevation in a flood hazard area. And I think you decided, we, we haven't changed this yet, but I think you decided, um, to keep the five feet. But only allow it right now for new structures, uh, only allow it for structures that are being raised, existing structures that are being raised.
Well, what, what about that new house they wanted to build on Maple Avenue? Or Lane or Road or whatever they call it, down Willow Point. The one that was, that required the cam?
The one they, that they raised?
No, it's a brand new structure. But shouldn't that have the five, be limited to five more feet than what is allowed?
Well, that's what you have to decide whether you want it for everything allowed in the flood zone, an additional five feet. I think you talked about last time, not allowing it for new structures and just allowing it if you raise your existing structure, like the other, like the other building. The building in Willow, in Willow Point.
Yeah, the one on the other side of the street of that.
Right.
Who's no one.
Right.
But why shouldn't this no one go up that high? It should have the same restriction. Our ability to raise it up that.
Well, that's what you have to decide. As a, as a commission. I think I heard last time you differently, but you'll come to some kind of agreement on that.
I would think it should apply whether it's a raised structure or a brand new one.
But don't we want to encourage people to just leave whatever varied houses already there? Build a new block that is a raised platform or something if they, if we, if this is a, a way of keeping existing structures by. Giving them a little gimme, which is the extra five feet.
Yeah, but if, if it's okay with a. With an existing building, why wouldn't it be alright for a new building?
But we do things for existing buildings or for. Other kinds of roofs or for other structures or whatnot, if we're, if we, if we want to encourage keeping existing housing stock or anything else. Then we have to come up with something to give them to benefit doing it, and this is a pretty simple, twenty-five feet.
Yeah, but i- i- if you're saying you can build a. An existing structure, raise it up to say thirty-five feet above. The ground level, why shouldn't the new one be able to go thirty-five feet?
Because they're designing from scratch, they're not trying to save anything.
Yes, I, can I weigh in? Cause I, I've done a few of these kinds of houses, not the old ones, but the new ones, and they tend to be. Uh, as, as Hal just said, you can design it the way that you want. And that I think that a person who has an existing structure is limited to that structure. And so that when they try to raise it up, there could be, uh. You know, it could be a flat roof, it could be a gable roof, and it could make a difference as to whether or not they would. Even be able to do it, because there, they have that limitation, whereas with a new house. They, they can design it in a way that would fit, so that's the only thing that I would say is that. Could be, that could be a reason to allow. That extra height. Thank you.
Okay, and again, as we're going through these. I, I, this is basically to get us to a point where we can submit an application. Once we submit the application, there'll still be a public hearing, there'll still be public comments, you'll still have discussions. So, um. So just to keep that in the background. And then this. This diagram was new, just basically to show how we measure. These exceptions, A, B, and C on the top, it would be all added together. If you have a screen. You would take that area of the screen and that would be the area and then also add A to that. So. That just gives a little clarity on how to measure, you know, if you have a screen around your equipment, basically, right now, our regs say you have to screen the equipment. So most everybody, if it's, if it's visible from the street or visible. Um, you basically have to screen the equipment.
Is a diagram like this a, a good place to, including a diagram, is a good place to put in. It'd be a simple thing to just say, and here's the normal setback from the front. Of the building that anyone thinks that these should be. As it turns out, each one of these piece, any piece of equipment. It's. It's to the benefit of the, uh, the people who own it to have it ten feet back, because that way they get to service it. Without taking their lives in hand, it's, it's no shit thing, you have to be six foot back, so if it's ten feet back, that means they can do it safely. So they, they wouldn't mind too much. But, uh, that also goes to our point of it not being, according to this, you can just put it right up to the front of the building. And then it looks like building, we don't want it to look like building, we want it to be setback from the roof. Some kind of minimum setback, and so it'll be a place to show it. If there's some reason why you can't, then they get to ask to, for permission to not.
Um, I've never thought about the minimum setback for equipment on top of a roof, so I don't know. I've never seen that in zoning regulations before, um. Again, maybe, maybe it's, yeah. I'll have to think about that one. Okay.
But not just in the diagram, it would have to be into the text. Maybe in four two two E. As a requirement. But it makes sense in an area like downtown Mystic, if you have this stuff back from, so you can't see it from the street.
Right.
Then you don't have to be so concerned with the screening.
We'll look into that, okay? Alright, so. See, the next section, um, section fourteen. Is basically just adding a diagram for clarification for this common access drive. When we discuss this with, with. Developers or applicants. It's always, okay, I can read all of this, but I can't visualize it. So basically, we created this diagram that we've been bringing into meetings. And people can visualize it better, um, for this common access drive. Basically. You can have a maximum of three twenty foot, um. Three twenty foot. Sorry. Twenty foot wide accessways to go back to three different lots. But you can have a common access drive that serves five lots. And that's a maximum of five lots. So if you have a sixth lot, you have to have a separate. Access drive or set, separate access drive to get back to that sixth lot. So this, this is basically what the regs say. There were some subdivisions a while ago, I think the planning commission was involved with them. Where people were trying to get a whole bunch of lots served off of an. Access drive versus a public street. And so we sort of. Considered that five was the maximum for a common access, access drive, if you have more than five, then you're looking at. Basically creating a public street. So this is just a clarification diagram.
You ought to put your eighteen foot width line in there too.
Oh, the width?
Yeah, the green, your green strip should be.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Isn't it, because the twenty feet is what you require for each lot. But the driveway itself has to be at least eighteen feet.
Right.
On those diagrams you have on page four twenty. You're missing some arrows on your, where you're taking your dimensions to show where, where the, uh. Min width measurement is.
On page what?
On page.
Page before.
More twenty.
Yeah.
Gotta just fix those.
There you go.
You see where it says min width measurement? Where is it measured from and where does it go to? There's no definition, it should have an arrow to show.
That's a minimum lot width.
I know what it is.
Yeah.
Just technically, the diagram doesn't show.
Okay.
What the measurement is by using arrows.
Yep, got it.
Just so that somebody doesn't get confused later on.
Okay. Okay, um. Okay, this sightline one was just the cleaning this up, it. Didn't read clearly, um. I didn't like the. The text that said other shrubbery must not be maintained. Does it mean you can still have your shrubbery there and just not maintain it? So I changed the language a little to basically say, or, um.
Why, why don't you just say it's prohibited?
What is prohibited, okay, that's a better word.
Use must not be, come right out and tell them it's a no-no.
It's prohibited. Okay.
Hmm, isn't that what you want?
Yes, that's better, I was trying to think of the wording. Okay.
Don't give them any excuses.
And then we, we show, we basically clarify where that ten feet is measured from what corner is the property line and not the, um, curb line. And then it's always, I mean, the town road and drainage standards and the. State might have other more restrictive sightline requirements that they have to comply with, but this is just a basic requirement. Does anybody have comments on that one? I think we talked about this one before, um, this was allowing, um. Outdoor storage yards and as far as screening. We, we realized that there was different screening for. Storage yards that are in the IM and the IG. And the WW versus screening for storage yards in other areas of the town. So in the IM, the IG, basically, we're just concerned about screening if it's visible from the street. Or from a residential, um, property, adjacent resident property. So that's what we added there. Comments? Anybody?
The, the, uh, school buses that are stored down by the airport, would they require the screening? No, I'm serious, because they. I, the way I read it, it's required, they would be required to have an eight foot screaming around.
Um, outdoor, I don't know if that would be considered an outdoor storage yard.
Well, it's certainly not inside.
No, but I mean, it's a parking.
You think that's a parking lot or tell me it's a storage area?
The storing cars, that's what we call a parking lot, so I think it's a parking.
Parking lot.
I think, I think the zoning official would interpret it as a parking.
It's a storage area for school buses.
What's the difference between that and an auto dealership?
Yeah. That's true. So.
I'm not sure the buses are for sale.
Fine point.
I don't think we're gonna be putting up a fence in front of Honda Cardinal. Of the, right. So. The next one. Is just a clarification that. Everybody has to meet conditions for filling and removing, but a special permit is required for major filling and removal. So that was just to state that upfront.
How large of an area or volume is this that requires a special permit?
Yeah, but you can talk to that one, I think.
Greater than a thousand cubic yards.
Which is how much? How big is it? I don't know.
Well, I mean, it's.
The bathtub on Willow Point, do they require that for digging all that stuff out that's stored now on the other side of Casino Road?
If it is, if it's associated with a building permit, no.
Well, I don't know.
No, but if it, it's a standalone, I mean, it, it, special permit would apply to just a standalone excavation or, um, or filling. Building a pond. Or gravel operation.
Yeah, well, that thing that they're, that dry dock or whatever they're putting down there.
Well, they've got a building permit, they, they have a building permit, so you don't, if you have a, a building permit, you don't have to. To get a special permit for the work or.
Or for the excavation?
Right, that's right.
I thought you did, but.
No, no, so if you had, I mean, you wouldn't have to get a permit, you know, to excavate for a foundation if you have a building permit.
So that's how they covered the whole? A three-sided hole.
Should we have the definition of the major filling in the regulation or is that defined elsewhere?
That's defined.
On the next page.
Major filling or removal of earth products.
That's it, good, thank you.
So. The next one was the temporary events, we talked about this last time too, we added agricultural events as a, as a use. And they're allowed as, um. A timber, uh, accessory used to an ongoing commercial agricultural operation in the RSR, RU, RM. CNCR, MVC, IM and IG districts. But they're subject to the following conditions. We didn't know whether we should make a whole section on just agricultural events, but it looks like the temporary event section that we already had. Could encompass whatever we were concerned about with agricultural events, so that's why we added it here. But it definitely has to be part of an ongoing commercial op, agricultural operi- operation. And was there anything different? No, I think that was it. So. And we added. And no event shall extend beyond ten PM in a residential district or on. Or, or. On a site adjacent to a residential district. So. I think everybody was okay with that last time. We also talked about the laboratory medical and scientific. New use last time, I think we talked about it for a while, and there were conditions, just the. This one basic condition placed on it, it's in the CN, MTC and MVC district. That we would, um, limit that facility to not exceed five thousand square feet. Those were the, um. The less intensive. Commercial or mixed-use districts, and we didn't want a huge laboratory. In that district.
Five thousand come from?
I don't know. Just.
So realistic or not, I, I have no idea, but.
I, I think it's realistic as far as. Let's say five thousand, what would be five thousand, um?
Johnson's.
Pardon?
Johnson's.
Maybe John, something like Johnson's.
I think Johnson's is bigger than five thousand square feet.
Yeah, I think so.
I think it is. Probably double.
Very big.
I just wondered if, if it's too limiting, or do you wait till the public hearing?
Well, you have setbacks too, so.
Well, it's the growth floor, it's just the floor area that. It was too limiting, but.
But there's still setbacks, doesn't that limit you to?
This is only limit, this is only limiting in these zones, it's not limited in all the zones in town. This would be your commercial neighborhood zone. Which is supposed to be more limited commercial, and then your MVC district, which is the village district. Um, and then MTC, do you want a big laboratory, medical, scientific building in downtown Ron? Yep, maybe we do, because. But, um. But I think is, I think it's okay for the, for these districts. but I think is, I think it's okay for the for these districts that we're we're talking about here. Not limited in the industrial district or the general commercial district or so I think we're fine for these districts.
Right.
This um next one was just changing it from marine dependent to water dependent because basically that's our definition. We have a definition for water dependent. We don't have a definition for marine dependent. It's a clarification. This, uh, we're on page. Yeah, we're on page twenty one of what we're doing.
What is? What does that really mean? Well. I mean, if you wanna it says you have to have it dependent on the water. If you wanted to overhaul a marine engine, you couldn't do that because it's not necessary to have water access for it.
This basically comes from our postal management statutes. It's the definition that's in the in the statutes for um water dependent.
Yeah, isn't what, isn't most of the Willow Point area water depend district?
No, it's a water, water, working waterfront district. Water dependent means the use needs to be lo- located adjacent to the water to actually do that use.
In the WW zoning district, which is Willow Point. And there's work that's done in the shipyard there that you don't have to have necessarily done next to the water.
Right.
Well. You're prohibiting that, aren't you?
Conditions apply in the following zoning district WW. Water dependent uses in the WW zoning district, light industrial uses are only allowed if they are water dependent, meaning that a location on the waterfront is critical to their core operation.
What if you wanted to build small, small boats like they built the sea slides down there? You couldn't do that because you can put, build them anywhere. I I I think this is overly restrictive.
Or do you want to put a line in there that says ancillary uses and have a little list of those? Yeah, related repairs in construction.
Yeah.
Apply to the following district WW. Well, you wouldn't want all light and all light industrial types of uses to be allowed there.
No, I I understand that, but they're like hell, just maybe it's hell's terminology would make sense. You know, it it's associated with what goes on there, but to just say it has to, the only thing that can be done is because it has to be dependent on waterfront siding.
Okay, so associated with a water dependent use, maybe.
Yeah, that would make sense, just so it, we don't prohibit something.
Okay.
That is normally associated with it. Like saying the maintenance on electronic equipment like a radio or something.
Right, right.
Do that in the, there because it's the people using it on their boats, but you could do that anywhere. Because it's portable equipment or like motor or engine repair.
That's a good catch. I mean, sometimes I just sort of float over these sections. It's like, okay, it needs to say water dependent and not marine dependent, but that's a good catch.
Yeah, well, I just want to make sure we don't get caught with somebody getting upset with some work.
Right, right.
I mean, the objective is, it's obvious what the intent is, but you never know what s- some lawyer is gonna say.
Good. All right, so this one is a new use. We talked about last time. These were the conditions for the new use um. I don't know if we want, we want to go back and relook at some of this after, I mean, you just basically went through allowing this use in the industrial district, the IM district. Um, you didn't have any standards for it, but you had a lot of different concerns on that use. So um I think I want to take another look at this as, or do you have any other concerns that aren't listed here that we need to look at?
What, what's the definition of marine craft? I I think you probably want a definition of what it means, what we're talking about. Does a pet, one of those stand up paddle boards, is that a marine craft or a windsurfer?
Um.
I don't know how you define it really. In some of this, in the restrictions seem to be a little bit overboard.
Like which ones?
Well, I mean, what you can, things that you have to do inside a building versus can you do some of this stuff outside? Right, s- some work on a, on a boat can be done outside without any problems. Depends what kind of work it is.
This would be, this would be um basically for for uses away from the water, so not associated with the marine.
Well, I know, but if you wanted to put a, mount a winch on a deck, this is prohibited unless it's done inside the the shed and there's no reason why it can't be done outside.
Uh, well, this one says should, any repair or routine maintenance should be conducted inside a building or under a structure.
And I thought we weren't using should in regulations.
That's what I have a comment on that, too. I agree. You can't use it. It's either can do it or can't do it.
I think that Diane, the goal was that we wanted to make sure that any hazardous operations that could have run off, like if somebody was sanding bottom paint that had, you know, nasty stuff on it, um, you know, if that was in rinsed away, you know.
That's what you want, you know, maybe that's what you want to say, anything associated with that involving hazardous materials.
Should be, it should, must, needs to be in a building.
Must be in an enclosed, yeah. An enclosed structure.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's what the objective is, isn't it?
Okay, but somebody, um, okay, let's think of the that site that we, you just approved um. Or or a site that's adjacent to a residential um zone. Should, would you allow sanding and all of that outside?
Adjacent to a si- to a residential zone, I'd say all this applies, that's highly restrictive because it's adjacent to a residential zone. As it's not, then not quite so important, except, but I would say but you even put in the word potentially hazardous or potentially hazardous, just because someone could say, hey, I'm spraying this perfectly good paint. It's not a problem. And we'll say, well, maybe, but maybe not, therefore it's potential, therefore you can't.
Well, you don't want things leaching into the ground either.
Exactly right.
Because that can mess things up. That's why you want to do that type of work inside.
But if it's, as you say, if it's adjacent residence, then what we did was correct is everything's got to be inside.
Shall and must um battle, I think we ended up with must.
Yeah, this must is, yes.
So you got it in uh location of storage, you got a shall on there.
I think we went back to using both at the end and I think in the beginning of the regs, we put all these things mean the same shall or must.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Yeah, I thought we had the lawyers weigh in and they.
Yeah.
That you don't have.
Did they have a problem with shall or do they have a problem with must?
It's.
I think they had a problem with shall.
Because it could, I I just wondered, because in a construction standard, must or will, uh, must means nothing. Will means that's a preexisting situation that's being given to you. Shall is a directive to the contractor. The director, and it's, there's, there's no qualms about that. There's that sacrosanct, that's the way those words are used. So to me, I'm surprised shall isn't what we're telling people to do. This is what we want you to do.
That's what we thought too. There was lawyers that argued that, that's right.
Well, can you, can you define it in the definitions?
I think we did in the beginning. I think, you know, shall and must means.
Mandatory.
Mandatory or whatever.
No, I mean, that's what you defined this, right?
Um, just one question, why is it at two acres, D- Diane? The number one lot area.
It could have come from another, from another type of use and we just kept that two acres. Do we need the two acres? I don't know.
Right.
Would you want, you know?
Well, you have to just, as long as the building is big enough to fit on the on the site.
Right.
You'd have to have a big enough building and then maneuvering for the boats to get into the building, so.
That should be the termination, not two acres.
Right, that's right, Jeff. That's a great, it's a great idea. Because say you have a small, um, a small wooden boat house or something that wants to do it, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be able to afford two acres, but.
All right, so you want to get rid of that acreage?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, the guy that is putting the bathtub on a Willow Point, he doesn't have two acres.
But he's in the WW, so he's a, he's a marina or whatever. Okay, so hazardous materials inside and then adjacent to residential. Okay. Got it. Well, this next one was just rewording it to, I think, make it a little clearer.
Which one are you on?
One, five, one fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen, outdoor storage, sales and display are prohibited. Um, except for town of Grown services, commercial nurseries and greenhouses and agricultural uses. This next one was just clarifying that Deerfield, the big Deerfield project was approved under um what used to be called a manufactured home subdivision standard. And we've now put it with under the same standards as the open space subdivisions that were approved. So that we just wanted to make sure we clarified that Deerfield also fell under these setback requirements. That was just that.
Single one to twenty four.
Twenty four, and it's just, just saying, this is just renaming it as open space subdivision map, because that's the real name of the map. So people can actually look for it under that. Okay, so WRPD. I don't know how much. There's two items here. One is the WRPD and one is a big discussion, potentially a big discussion on what's allowed in the WRPD and what's not. Um, I think if we get into a big discussion, we might want to pull this out of these regs. This application that we're doing and put it in a another application that that comes forward at another time. Um, unless you're real clear that, yes, we definitely want to take um, gas stations out of, our fuel dispensing stations out of the WRPD at this time.
But that, this is a major change as opposed to just a clearing up a regulation.
Right, but this is, I mean, this is things that we, we knew, these are items that we knew were out there that were concerns to people, so if we want to go forward with this at this point, we can, otherwise we can take it and move it to another.
I think it should have more importance, you know, do it is. With more important items, or a ma- it's more of a major change than just a cleanup.
Right.
We have discussed this before.
Yeah, the zoning commission did too at length. It was a mixed vote on that one.
Right.
Well, I I was just thinking of from a public standpoint, whether, are we hiding it and like, go under the, under the radar?
Well, it'll still be public hearing though, right?
But if you advertise it as just a cleanup regulation, minor regulation issues, people might consider this to not be a minor issue.
Is a cleanup.
I'm not sure we're not, we're gonna advertise it just as a cleanup. I I think there, there are some issues here and we usually reference every section. All right, we're changing. Um, but it depends on if you want to get involved. If you think there's other items in the WRPD that are important to discuss, or is it just, if ever, you know, if we have an agreement that, yeah, we just want to take out gas stations. If I don't know if we've had any even anybody come in and want to put a gas station in the WRPD since these regs have happened.
Nobody's building gas stations.
No, exactly.
No, they are. They want to build in someplace, other places in town, but not the WRPD. Is Deb still here?
So maybe that's a good time to do it. Let's get rid of it. Nobody's asking.
Yeah. I don't know if Deb's still on, or did she have to go to council?
Oh, she got kicked out. She's trying to get back in.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Um, yeah, if I could weigh in here, I just was wondering, because I, we're adding in the marine craft construction and I just had it in my notes that I wrote and just what the rationale is behind, I mean, unless the last regulation is how we're gonna work with this and that everybody's comfortable with that, because there were some hazardous storage and stuff like that.
That's another thing, whether you want to allow that in the WRPD, that's the new use and so um, we just basically put it there with marine craft. Um, right now, you don't allow major vehicle repair and service. That's totally prohibited, but you do allow minor vehicle repair and service in the WRPD. So, um, that's a decision you have to make, whether you would.
I think just for me, I think the I, the idea of the thousand gallon tank, which is buried under the ground, no matter how well it's stored, it gives me some concerns in the WRPD.
Was that basically because it was on um septic and not sewer? Because this would, you would be required to be on sewer here.
And those things are allowed to go down the sewer?
Um, there's, there's certain things that are allowed to go down the sewer, yes.
But I I see under that, that I don't know, you have a new thing. I didn't know boats had brakes.
Brakes?
Well, you say fuel storage, use of storage of oils, paints, thinners, solids, various, break and transmission fluids. I didn't think boats came with brakes.
That would come in handy.
There must be some kind of other fluids.
No, I think it got copied from some other.
The consult, the consultant did that.
But it should say hydraulic. But it should say hydraulic, you know, hydraulic oil. Oh, the consultant did that?
So we'll just take a break and put transmission fluid.
You should say hydraulic. For, it's hydraulic fluids that you really would have on boats.
Well, you have transmission fluid too.
I don't think you wanna just take the word break out.
That'd be a break on some boat or something.
People would like it, it'll come in handy.
You call it an anchor.
You could have sea, you have, you think, sea anchors sort of slow the boat down, but they.
I ran into a few docks myself in my.
That's where you put it in reverse. But it's not exactly like a break.
Okay, so what do you guys wanna do? You wanna move forward with this now, or you wanna punt? Do you wanna? Could take a boat. Maybe let's talk about the fuel dispensing station too. How, how many people? Want to just get rid of it from the WRPD?
It's not a final decision, so it's just whether we go. So we might as well go to hearing with it.
Hearing with getting rid of it.
Yeah, with it or without it.
Let's go to hearing with it gone.
Yes, right. That's good. I agree. Okay, and then what about marine craft, construction, maintenance, repair? It would be on sewer and it has conditions.
I, I think I would be comfortable if it was back to the, or, or that if everything was done inside.
Okay, so in, uh, let's see if that's.
That's just me.
Six four. Six point four.
That would have to be.
Let's see, so the conditions are on page twenty-six. Right here. So here would be, must be tied into sewer. Stormwater runoff must be treated, um. Before any overlap flow, repair work or changing of fluids must take place inside, inside. On impervious floors and is prohibited outside. Um, floor, you know, they have to deal with the floor drains and hazardous materials. Washing of vehicles. Must take place inside and all wash water collected and recycled outside is prohibited, and is prohibited outside. And then no washing of vehicles is allowed that would allow wash water to enter any storm drainage system. So that's pretty much.
Yeah, I know, that, that, I mean, to me, that seems better. If we could put all in front of repair work, but that would be the only thing that I would recommend.
All?
All repair work. Unless there's a, uh. Great, better word.
Okay, so we'll leave that.
Back to the must again. Uh, must is a good word there, I guess, or is that word?
Must is good. Either must or shall is good.
Okay, whatever is the better, better, better one for me anyway.
Okay. So we'll go forward with that, um. This was just to. Basically saying, um. No, we went, this was, we were on the WRPD.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize.
And we went to erosion control, um. This is basically saying you can't start clearing of vegetation until the final plans are re-approved and inspection is done by town staff. So that's just clarifying that. We usually tell them that, but it's better to have it in the regulations. This next one is parking requirements. We wanted to look at all the parking, but we didn't have enough time. But basically, we wanted to look at mainly the residential parking. Because we think what the consultant did. Basically was reduce it a little too much. Um, especially when you're for a. Studio or a one-bedroom unit, they weren't even requiring one space. I can see in an urban setting, um, this reduction is appropriate. Or where there's a lot of public transportation, but I don't think we've. Gotten to that point yet in Groton. Anywhere.
Should you use that, uh, the size of these multi-unit dwellings? As a termination and use step changes, because if you only have a very small number of units in your. Multi-unit dwelling, you probably want more parking spaces per unit than you would if you had, say, ten or fifteen. In there, or it would average out to maybe these numbers would be realistic. Cause it, if you talk about a one-bedroom apartment, a lot of times there could be a couple in there. And they'd have two cars. Because they have two jobs in different, opposite directions. So you, you need more than, say, one and a half spaces. But if you had twenty units, twenty-one bedroom units together. Then you might get by with these lower numbers.
Yes, that makes logical sense, um.
But it makes it more complex.
Makes, makes it more complex. I mean, right now, we give them a minimum and then we say a maximum. So if they think. If the developer thinks, and this is, you know, the economic development side of me, there is one. That says, let the market prevail and let the developer side. Decide if he can rent out those units, if he, if he only has one parking space to give him. I mean, I don't know. I think you, you make sense. But how much do we wanna complicate it?
I, I'm just concerned, because you don't wanna put, have somebody in a small area with very little street parking. Making his people park on the street, or you get into. Uncomfortable situations. With people fighting for parking spaces.
I would be a little theory going with the more than one for every efficiency in one bedroom.
Efficiency, I don't know. I was saying.
I don't know, what does everybody else think? This is basically putting it back to where we were before.
I had a question when, in my notes where I tried to put in a two-unit, one-bedroom and it required four spaces. But a three-unit, one-bedroom required three spaces.
Okay, so a two-unit, a two-unit, one-bedroom?
That's a duplex.
With one bedroom each would require four spaces.
No, two-unit, one-bedroom would require. No, if it's.
There are two unit dwellings. Two spaces for every dwelling unit.
Right, if it's, if it's a duplex.
And they have one unit. Right? Or two units, and they could be two, one-bedroom apartment.
Right, we don't deal with bedrooms for one and two dwelling units, dwelling, that's right.
But I'm just, my point is. Building would require four spaces. Unit. With one bedroom would require three spaces less, which didn't make sense to me. And then we were back up the four. When we went to a four unit with one bed. Does that make, am I making, am I?
No, but if you're talking about a single. One house, with one bed, you're talking about one house or a duplex. Where you have the extra parking spaces, but you're probably gonna have two driveways that may lead to a garage. Or at least you'd be off, you know, on-site parking. You gotta have enough for the people there, plus some visitors.
Well, but that's, that was where, I mean, I, I don't, you know, I'm just.
I, I think when you end.
I was just, I just found those numbers to go in the wrong direction once and then back up to where it was. And I was just looking at one bedroom. Two-unit, three-unit, four-unit, and it went four, three, four.
Well, two, that's because, yeah, dwelling, a duplex is. Usually duplexes aren't just one bedroom. Usually there are a couple of bedrooms and they're more. They're more considered like a single family home. So that's why I think you're, you're measuring. Two spaces for every dwelling unit in a duplex. And maybe, maybe we do three, three parking spaces for a duplex. I don't know.
No, because.
Instead of the four, I don't know.
A true duplex would mean that usually they're equal. Sizes on both sides.
So then they have to argue who gets that second space.
It seems like, rather than tie the parking to units, they should be tied to bedrooms.
That would be hard in like a single-family home.
I don't think, when you get down to a, a one and two-unit dwelling, you're down at a minimum where less than two spaces. Is, for each unit is about as low as you can go. It's nice to just reduce in general all these spaces. But that might just be as low as you can go as soon as somebody has a birthday party or sunk. So maybe two is, for that is just, it is what it is. It's two spaces. Multi-dwelling, you always get to say there's an average and whatnot, though I, I kind of agree with the idea that. How many units there are in the development should kick in at some point. But I, I generally notice for a lot of these, it's good to have the minimum and the maximum that takes care of some of it, but it's quite often that. That concept, again, if you have the right number of parking spaces. And when somebody has, somebody's kid has a, a birthday party, nobody knows what to do. And they're spilling out on the street and in the driveways and whatever else, and we're kind of not caring for it.
I don't think we wanna try to provide parking for that either, though.
No, but what happens is, I mean, a lot of places, what they do is they have someplace on-site, if it's a lot of development. There's someplace, there's a common grouping of other parking spaces. That's the way it's handled.
Right, like visitor parking.
Exactly right.
There are some, a lot of towns that do that. If you wanna look into it, I can, I can look at some other options for you if you want.
But the, uh, proposed numbers in red, you're saying that's what we used to have?
Yes, I'm pretty sure.
Without any difficulty? And we've not had serious problems with it? If so, we should probably just leave it, you know, change it and use those numbers.
I mean, there are some, there are some, some towns do like five percent or two percent. Visitor parking, so you do have those extra spaces, so that when somebody comes to visit you, you. There, every space isn't assigned and you have someplace to park. It depends how the project is run, if they assign spaces or not, or just leave everything open. So. Alright, so what we'll do is, right now, we'll leave these as they are, but I'll, I'll come up with a few other options, maybe. For you to consider for maybe visitor parking and then maybe based on. A number of units, we used to have, if it was a really large apartment project or, or condominium project. You could reduce this number of, of. Spaces, because yes, some people only had one car and some had two, but it averaged out more. And I think that was up to like two hundred units, Deb. So. Alright, so. If we can move forward on that, um. Oh, the next one is the EV parking requirements. This was one that you asked for. Um, Bruce basically put this together. Mr. Kane had some comments on it, so if Bruce is, is he still here?
I'm here.
Okay, so Bruce, you wanna explain what you did and everything?
Yeah, sure. So, um, a- as Diane said, you know, this was based off of Mr. Kane's, um, request, uh, a few months back. To kind of look at what other towns are doing for electronic vehicle requirements.
Electric.
Electric, sorry.
You put the word electronic in here and they're electric vehicles.
Electric vehicles. Okay, um, well, anyways, so these are, um. The requirements that are based off Middletown, Connecticut. So that's the only municipality in Connecticut. Um, that I found that has any type of requirements like this in their zoning regulations. Uh, there's one or two other towns in Massachusetts, but it's, it's really not too prevalent in New England yet. Uh, I did see. Some examples in Minnesota and definitely some larger cities, particularly in the south. So what I did with this, we haven't really talked about it yet, so there's not, we don't really have. You know, a basis of what all the commission members are looking for in this regulation. So what I did was I drafted it. Very similar to what Middletown, Connecticut has. And the basic proposal here is that. Any new development or redevelopment that requires twenty-five or more parking spaces. Would be required to have at least one, um, EV charging space. Or three percent of the total number of required parking spaces, whichever is greater there. And then there are signage requirements here, just noting that, you know, this space is for an electric, an electric vehicle only. And there's also, so these are kind of design standards, almost charging level is also something that comes up a lot in regulations. So level, and I know, uh, Mr. Kane commented on this too, so level one or two charging stations. They're made, they're, they're very slow charging stations. They're made for more, um, overnight parking. So that would be something that would be acceptable for residential. Or multifamily uses, but really when you start getting into retail or a restaurant or. Even a workplace, you wanna start to get in the, the level two or level three charging stations. Level two is, it charges a vehicle in, um, just a few hours. Level three, it's about thirty minutes or even twenty minutes in some instances. So that is a lot, um, lot faster and it applies for short-term use. Uh, putting something here for maintenance, it says that, um, should be regularly maintained. And then accessibility, I, I guess kind of the theory here is that. You don't want the EV parking spaces to be the most convenient space, because then it, they tend to be occupied by. Vehicles that aren't electric or vehicles that aren't. Actively charging, which is actually a comment that, um, that Mr. Kane had, which I thought was a good point, that. Maybe these signs should say that the vehicles need to be actively charging and not just an electric vehicle. So that's something I could definitely incorporate in here too. So, really, this is a baseline, you know, I'm, I'm looking for comments, I, I can, you know. Definitely change everything and get it back to everyone to, you know, see what they want, but. Um, yeah, let's just start with that and then, um, yeah, let's see what everybody thinks about this and what else we should consider.
Well, I like the actively. These situations where they're not, so that I think would meet, would be a great adjustment. That's it.
Who typically pays for it? Uh, usually it's, it's the developer that pays for this, um, right, when a site is redeveloped or, um, developed. And I should add that.
The electricity.
I guess the owner of the property. I don't know how that would work.
It, it could be metered.
They have swipeable, um, metered ones?
They do.
They do. I just, I think, sorry, that one space is not enough. I mean, when you have General Motors basically saying they're gonna change their whole business model in the next few years. I mean, that was a shock. I thought it was a big deal. And I just, I think, um, one for twenty-five. I think, I, the projections, I think, even scaling it back, um, or, or for it to be a pretty, uh, pretty good sell going forward because the cost, of course, of having electric cars gone down, going down, so. I would, um, I would think we want more than that.
Isn't the market.
I agree with Sue.
I definitely think we will, we'll want more, but we don't know how many more and we don't know when we'll want them, but isn't this something that the market will definitely kind of take care of?
I think, Hal, that's the thing that's, that's actually happening is that it isn't. And which is why either the government or developers are gonna have to start, that, that's one of the things that's stopping people from buying these cars. Is where do you get them charged, you know?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, no, the only other things that I would.
We have any utilization numbers? Was that enough?
Oh, I don't, I didn't hear, was there a question?
The, uh, the charging stations that are right at, um, the top of the hill, are those, uh, do, do we have utilization numbers for those by chance?
I don't off the top of my head, um, you know, we don't charge for it, but let me see if Public Works does, if, if they have numbers.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, give us a nice, uh, cause there's three spots there. Two.
There's one charger, two spots.
I guess, is it more expensive to retrofit rather than say for a developer to put in five of these at the get-go? I just. Order us the cost is.
Yeah, oh, well, that, that's something else we could consider too. Some larger cities have a requirement that so for any new development or redevelopment, they, um, they require a certain percentage of the parking spaces to be pre-wired and equipped to accommodate future charter. So we could require, you know. Two or three spots need to be, um, actually have a charging station, but say twenty or ten or twenty percent of the new, of the parking spaces need to be pre-wired so they can be equipped later on at a much, um, cheaper cost. I, I think, I think I read that it's like, it's eighty percent more expensive to rewire a parking lot than it would to install it and it would be to, um, install it if it was already, already rewired. So that's what a lot of, now a bigger cities are doing.
Yeah, makes sense.
Things that I would, like the twenty-five spaces, um, you would not or the three percent, one parking space or three percent, the three percent, you'd have to have, uh, I mean, you, you'd. How, how would you ever get to the ten percent? I guess is my question. Well, it says twenty-five parking spaces would require one spot. And or three percent of the total number of spaces. So, so you would not get another one until thirty-three spaces or thirty-four spaces? Is that correct? Or more than that, three percent?
I think what? I, I think the, the intention of that is, um, is kind of the way we do parking spaces now where there's a minimum and a maximum. So that's not saying that we would ever require ten percent. It's saying that right now you can only make ten percent of the parking spaces electric.
Yeah, but I guess, and my que- my question is then, the second parking space would kick in in at, uh, seventy spaces? Is that right? That would, that's when it would kick in, at seventy spaces?
Or fifty?
One or three percent of the total number of spaces. You would need seventy, seventy spaces to get, uh, two parking spaces. Three percent of seventy is two point one. Well, that's, I guess that was just my concern that that, how that, you would get one after twenty-five and then you wouldn't get the second one until seventy spaces.
Three percent of the total number. So for a hundred space, then you, you would need three spaces. So for two space, yeah, around seventy, whatever you need.
It just seems like an awful lot of parking spaces. I mean, the, the, what Sue said before, GE is not gonna be making any internal combustion engines in fourteen years. They're phasing them out starting today. And so these things are coming, and I think if Rotten is ready for those cars to be parked here, it will be a giant attraction to this town. And the kinds of people who drive them. And one other point that that I would make, cause I've been thinking about this a lot, is that I would suggest that we reduce the parking levels if a person has one of these vehicles, so that if you, if you are parking an EV car or you have a space, that would count as two spaces. I'm just gonna throw this out there, that a developer would have to normally provide so that it's re, and the reason that I was thinking about it is that a person who perhaps is driving an electric vehicle, their second car is a pair of sneakers. And so that it's gonna reduce the parking need. I mean, that's what's my, you know, little joke there, but. Thanks for laughing. I, I just, I would like to be able to throw a bone to the developer. You know, you can have left parking spaces if you're willing to put these in, cause we realize there's a greater expense and it's just being a little creative. The, the stick, I mean, the carrot rather than the stick. That's it. I'm just, I, I see my kids today who are in their early twenties and they wouldn't, this is what they're, you know, this is what people are gonna be doing. And I think that if Rotten is ready for those people and those vehicles, that we will stand out in New England.
Right. That's why I don't think we should limit it to ten percent either. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, are, are we comfortable with two parking spaces for seventy cars?
We'd have.
That seems low to me. And the other thing is, the thing that sparked all of this for me was the, when we were doing the parking lot behind Azoo, I don't mean to hot this conversation, but I get excited, sorry. There was a small space there and I thought to myself, that would be a great place, that small space for an electric charging station, but we didn't, I didn't think of that at the time. But it would seem like limiting ourselves to standard-sized parking spaces might not be in our best interest if we have a parking design where there is a small space and it doesn't, it's not useful for other things, maybe that's the kind of, I, I'm just thinking out loud. Thank you.
We're gonna have electric Honda Odysseys in no time, so I don't think, I think having the standard space and still a standard space. But, uh, I, I agree, one, one or two spaces anywhere is not enough. I agree with that. The ten percent limitation is, I don't see a point of it. I agree with that. I think it's a great idea to have some kind of a gimme if you put in above a minimum amount of above a minimum amount of electric, electric, not electronic, electric parking spaces. Charging station.
I don't know what that number would be, but I would, you know, I just threw something out there, but if other people have suggestions, but I thought that was a, you know, good way to get people to do this. You know, especially in a tight spot anyway. Food for thought.
Okay, I, yeah, I can definitely look into that. And something else we should think about is which type of uses we wanna apply this for. Is it all commercial uses? Um, obviously you probably wanna do multi-family, why, and probably workplaces, but I mean, we should probably think about, you know, hospitals, schools, like if, if there's any uses we don't wanna apply it to, or if we just wanna apply it to all, you know, commercial and mixed use and multifamily.
But is it realistic for people that if they're going into, say, a commercial business or a doctor's appointment to go plug in their car, it takes them all day to charge it?
If it's a level three, you're talking about twenty minutes from dead, from a dead battery.
Or it's employees that are working there too.
Oh, if the employees are, but I, I think we may not be very realistic on how people work it. I mean, you may only buy gas once a week. Why, how often are you gonna need to charge your car? And how many people have a, a house where they would have their charging unit and prefer to do it there?
Well, that was the other.
General Motors say I'm only gonna build electric cars. If people don't buy them, they're either go out of business or they have to change and they're just guessing that that's what's gonna happen. So we don't know that. I, I think it's good to have this proposal the way it, it's proposed and it just start getting people to thinking about it, making some of them available.
I don't see very many developments that we have on the boards or that we have done recently. We wouldn't have any. We'd have zero. And so. But we wouldn't have any.
Yeah, so how many electric cars?
So then what's the point of the regulation?
Because it would, it would start for new businesses or starting, say, in these shopping centers, they would have Walmarts, they'd have to put them in. And maybe it would help. It's a start, but I don't think it's gonna solve everything if we actually go to all electric, but you gotta solve the battery problem, which nobody's figured out how to do.
Right, cause we have an electric car at work and we can't basically take it out of town. Doesn't go that far on, on our battery. So, and then if it's like, if it's raining and you're washed, using the wipers, that decreases the amount of time, it's there, I think there's a lot of things that still have to be worked out for a long distance anyways. But hopefully they'll work it out.
You can go four hundred miles now, so.
You can?
Yeah, you can get a pickup truck, go four hundred miles.
Well, that's pretty good. I think we, I, what, Deb, what can we go thirty? We can go a hundred miles. If it's, if it's nice and, if we're not using anything else in the car.
And it's warm up. If it gets cold, then you lose a lot of.
So that's pretty good, though, four hundred. Don't get there.
It's a new standard.
Anyway, I see this as an opportunity for Grotten. And, and I would like to see, uh, a greater number at the low end. And, um, a, a gimme for people who do put them in to require less.
Yeah, but then our parking rules are no good.
Yeah, but Jeff, the thing is, is that these are for only twenty-five spaces. We're already, you know, twenty-five spaces is a big lot already. And so to reduce it by one, if you put in a park, an EV parking space isn't a great loss.
Mystic Heart Association parking lot.
They should have some, that would be a great place to have some.
Yeah, they get over, they get full on a weekend in the summertime, as it is. They need more.
But if they're charging, that could be a profit-making thing for them. I think that's probably a win-win.
Yeah, it could be, yeah. You need, if you use the charging, you don't have to pay for the parking, free parking. Can, hey Bruce, could you explain either the source for what a level one or two is, or put it in some other words that would make sense for five years from now, when they may use different terms?
Level one is a hundred and ten volts, two is two twenty, three is, uh, four forty.
Yeah, if you wanna put it like that.
Yeah, and so that you're, you're, and then you're reducing the, the charging time with those higher voltages.
Does it make sense to have the word minimum in front of those? Because the technology will change by the time the year's out, I mean. You change.
No, but the source, the source of the power won't change. As you, that's just what's off the street. You got one, one ten, two twenty and four forty. That's all you have.
Just the addition of another wire is all that it amounts to.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I mean, your house, you have two twenty. You just add one more wire, you get four forty.
The building code in, uh, that, that they were just rewriting actually included putting charging stations in every new house. It was taken out at the last minute, but I would suspect that it's going to come back. And so that this is coming. You know, and it would be part of the building code then for new construction. Which I just found that interesting that, you know, it's, I, I think that this is one of those things that we should be embracing. But that's what I think. I don't know what it costs to put one of these things in, by the way.
Well, it probably depends on and the cables.
It's one of those things that's probably gonna get cheaper the more that, that they're put in.
I don't know. It's not sophisticated equipment. All you're doing is converting AC to DC.
Equipment involved with it too, cause it's reading the battery charge. Since the pictures of cars bursting into flames has hit the internet.
But this is a unit that you buy, Hal, I would believe, right? I would suspect. It's just something that you're buying and it's in a box.
That's right. And you connect it to whatever power you have and that's, that's it.
Okay, so Bruce is gonna work on some of this and we'll get back to you on it. Alright, Bruce, you have any other comments or questions you need answered?
Um, no, I, I, I don't think so. I guess just what I, what I thought about, uh, from, um, Steve's comment is, uh, the cost, so, and it just reminded me, I did see a couple of regulations that address that, so. What, I, I, and I can look at it, but I, I think some communities actually said that these, um, charging stations need to be free to the public. Um, and then some said that they need to, that they allow the ability to, um, have the owners charge. So I, I can look at that and kind of put both those in there too to kind of address that question. Then we can kind of see which way we wanna go with that.
Probably depends on the use, you know, which way it goes.
Well, just, it, the regulation maybe shouldn't address it and just leave it silent.
Yeah.
For that.
I think free is too cheap.
Yes.
It costs money to generate electricity.
Alright, um, I think we're going to put off the sign regulation stuff. Unless you guys are in like agreement with whatever we've done here, um, I think, um, I think there might be other items you wanna address with signage at this point and I'd rather get this one other thing done tonight that is more critical. Which is the grading issue in relationship to property line. Uh, we wanted to do this for the regulations to begin with. And we didn't, we, we ran out of time. But basically we have this issue in town where developers can come in or a project can come in and put a an eight-foot basically retaining wall right on property line or like a foot away from property line and then have an eight-foot retaining wall and then go in about five feet or so and have another eight-foot retaining wall and then start the top of their building at, you know, that top of those two retaining walls. So it creates this issue at the property line where it's impacting the adjacent property. A lot of towns require that you have to move enough in from the property line before you can start filling that area, um, and creating an increase in grade. So I, I've looked at a number of towns and this seemed like the most reasonable way to do it. Uh, basically allowing a certain amount of area from the property line where there would be no substantial change in existing grade, let's say plus or minus one foot. So you have a, a small area where you're not changing it greatly and then you could start increasing the grade but only at a maximum three to one slope up to the setback line. And then at the setback line, you're able to do your building or whatever. Um, so because a lot of development we've seen, they fill in this whole area here um, between the property line, the setback line and create, and fill it in with retaining walls, which they use for parking lots or whatever, or other lawn area. This creates a very poor um, development between the two properties and it impacts the adjacent name and adjacent property. The other thing we thought about was, okay, you come in five feet, you get that one or plus or minus one foot of change in grade here. And then within this area between that five feet and the setback line, your maximum height of your walls can be four feet high. And then if you wanna step those walls, you can, you need to have like a 10 foot distance between those wall. So we want to propose this because we've basically had this come up in a, a number of different projects and it's impacting the adjacent neighbors. And from a zoning standpoint, we can't do anything about it because it meets the zoning regulations. The retaining wall is less than eight feet high, therefore it's not considered a structure. So it doesn't have to meet that. Basically is what our regulations say right now. So, um.
Can you give an example of that, Diane?
Yeah, I have a picture. Let me see if I could share it. I have to, I have to stop sharing this. Air screen. That's my manser roof. Um, can you see that? Shared.
Uh, buildings on a slope.
Yes. Here's the property line for the adjacent single family residential right on this stone wall. What they did was they took and they built an eight foot high um, retaining wall right at their property line. Well, you know, and then they had, they filled all of this in and then the building's basically at the setback line. So um, they, and then it, in this case, we asked for some screening trees. Well, you couldn't put the screening trees down here, obviously, because it wasn't going to um, help with screening. And at the top of the wall to plant trees, you have to be careful that you're not impacting the structural part of the wall. So you had to put them further back. So this has happened, um, but there are other, other properties where it's even more, they go eight feet at property line, come in a few feet or five feet and then go eight feet up more with a wall, another wall. And that's been allowed by, by zoning.
Yeah, the self-storage facility that's on the corner of Route 184 and Winding Hollow. I mean, it's not adjacent to a residential structure, but if you drive in Winding Hollow, you can see that there is a really tall wall, maybe four or five feet, and then you had another tall wall in the self-storage facility on top of that. So you can drive by it and get a sense of what it looks like.
So it's basically artificially filling the property line, um, which doesn't create a good design, we think. And it impacts the adjacent property.
Where are we thinking this would be in? Where is this? I mean, an issue. I can see this is obviously an issue. You're showing it to us, but we got, there's also like Waterford Commons that they built that boulder wall, that spectacular Aztec boulder wall that the whole thing is built on top of.
Right.
And that's probably okay there because who, who cares? But so where, I think we want to be specific about what this is a problem.
Well, that might not be adjacent right to the property line. Um, it's into the site. And so therefore, if it's into the site, we don't have a problem with it. It's when it's right on the property line that the change in grade is going to impact it, whether it's drainage, whether it's visual and whether it's safety wise. I mean, if you had some, if you were I kept thinking those boulders would fall down on that Waterford.
Well, they'll, they'll move after a while.
They don't fall down.
Yeah, I was like, oh my God.
They can though.
Yep.
I've seen, cause where am I placed in Vermont? You can see some of this stuff actually move around.
Yeah, sure.
Structurally very safe. I don't think, I mean, I'm surprised that you, this would be allowed by a building code.
I think they're actually, when you go straight up like that, I think they're actually tied in with GeoFabric.
Right, they're tied in to the back.
Oh, you're, you're, you're not seeing all the structure. So it's not, it can shift, but it, it can't really collapse. It can't.
Sometimes the stuff starts blowing out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that.
There a fence on top of that as well?
Uh, right now there is, there might, that might be a construction fence on it.
Where is this? Take this picture.
Um, this one is at Pleasant Valley Road of the apartments up there.
Valley North apart, yeah.
In the ones?
Yes.
Wow.
It's the third building, the face.
Farthest north, yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, at the other end of that is where the path going down to Route 12 isn't. So.
Right. It's, it's coming. We've got.
Diane, if this were frontage and you were built into a hill, I'm thinking like um, downtown Mystic maybe, or something like that, where you might find a wall uh, on the street. And then there's like stairs that go up. I know that I can think of some in New London. But I can see where this is like something that you might need for a front of a property, but maybe not on the sides as much.
Well, it depends on the existing grade. I mean, if your grade on your site is going, if, if it's net, you know, the existing grade. Yeah, the, and you can follow the existing grade, but to create this to fill so that it fills to the property line, um, and then you get into issues with maintenance. Some people put them right on property line and then in order to maintain the wall, you, do you need an easement from the adjacent property?
Yeah.
You need a easement to construct the wall? I don't, you know.
Yeah.
It it's just become an issue.
It, would, would limiting the eight feet solve the problem to like five or six?
Well, yeah, that would be a start. Like, like we said, four feet maybe. But, um.
What did Stowington do with this? They just had a recent.
Oh, they, they actually went to special permit for situations like this.
Hmm.
Yeah, they did have a recent change. I can look at that to see what they did. Different, different towns do different things. But a lot of towns have something so that you're not doing what, you know, we allow to be done in this town.
Hmm.
Yeah, that, this to me looks terrible.
I, it looks unsafe to me, yeah.
And for the neighbor, it's a shame.
Yeah.
Real soon. I would say that for, I mean, here, you're, you're showing this maximum four foot lifts. Um, I honestly would think that even, even looking at the, the illustration here, if that was simply a two or three foot lift, a single two or three foot lift with a, a grade that, as you mentioned behind it, uh, probably wouldn't feel so bad. The fact that it's up five and six and way taller than that at the other end, I believe. It's, it's much higher at the other end. And I say that just personally, my next door neighbor for his little apron way in front of his garage uh, put a, within a couple of feet of my lot line, a probably three foot tall retaining wall. It's a little curved to it. It's covered with ivy now. And frankly, I, I'm fine with it. It's, we kind of agreed on it. Um, and throughout the neighborhood, we have little boulder three foot retaining walls. A single one doesn't make much impact. You can blend that right into the landscape.
Right.
So that might be the exclusion is to have a single three foot lift. Might be excluded for this. But uh, I, I see your point with the one and three. That's just normal grade. There wouldn't be advantage to putting in a retaining wall if it's one and three.
No, and that would probably be nicer because you'd just have the one and three.
Yep.
Hmm.
So.
That might be a little too limiting for conditions.
But again, it's only to setback line. Once you get to your setback line, you know, you can do whatever you want. It's that area between
Right.
The setback line and the property line. What's it? 20 feet, 30 feet sometimes?
The building code is silent about if, within the setback, after you met the setback line?
Building.
I mean.
The zoning, zoning would be, I mean, zoning, you'd have to meet height for, you know, the zone and everything.
Cause this is, gets into a structural issue.
Um, structural issues for retaining walls when they're over a certain height, um, you get into
You gotta have.
Look and get engineering, engineers to certify the walls, but that's when they get pretty high.
Well, eight feet's pretty high to me.
Yeah.
Hmm. I mean, you, especially when you're putting the buildings right next to it. Like what you show in this picture.
Yeah.
Hey, you're proposing four feet.
Right. On that, on the diagram, if you want to go back, can I get rid of this one? Or you want, you want to show this? I propose be, in the property, between the property line, the setback line, the maximum height of the walls could be four feet, although you can step them back if you want and have a couple of four foot high walls. Um, they say we try it.
Hmm.
I mean, we have to do something because
What, what you wanna say is you wanna use that lore picture as the best solution?
Um, well, they can do either solution. They can just do a slope, um, or they can do walls. I mean, if you wanna say I guess we don't need to, unless you're looking at create, having more than a change in grade within that five feet. The first five feet, like Hal said. I don't know. I don't think we'd be looking at this for a single family home. Although, I don't know, maybe for subdivision.
Yeah. Most places on Ashby Street would need this. They might not even meet the requirement. Cause that hill is so steep on the side.
Right, but again, it's existing, so.
No, I mean, if you wanted to put a new house there.
Oh, if they wanted.
A new structure. I was a little surprised at how steep it was.
Hmm.
But there may be other places that exist in town like that.
I think you probably give them a little extra left there, even using you show a four foot uh, retaining wall and then a dead flat area and then a four foot retaining wall.
Right.
When in fact, they would get a little benefit because they really it won't be dead flat, it wouldn't drain, but it should get at least a one foot lift and maybe in that space. So it's 10 feet. So to get, it could get a three foot lift and still look okay.
Hmm.
Still not be so, so awful. And that would be an advantage to having the retaining wall because they're trying to accomplish something. So that way you go up four foot, you go back 10 foot and three foot higher just in grade and then four foot above that. So in effect, you'd end up with going up, be able to go up seven feet by your second retaining wall. But it wouldn't look like that. It would only be four foot exposed retaining wall. That's kind of what we're trying to stop is how much giant un-landscape retaining wall you got.
Right, visually, and then also how close to the property line. Um.
Yeah, cause if you have a very, very high wall, it purposely sets you back. You know, as, as, could be 20, 30 feet, depending on how high the wall is.
Right. But then you also want to be able to plant in those areas too, be, if you're, have to deal with buffer situation. So, um.
Oh, I think the, the four foot high max and, and the 10 foot spacing is correct. What needs, just needs to be shown in there is in that space between the two. You can go up two or three feet in the grading and you're going to want to go up two feet in the grading.
Okay, so go up with couples like slope. You're sloping up, but then you go up, okay.
Hmm.
So it'd be a combination in two pictures?
Right, right. Okay. All right, so let me propose something, um, and we'll see what happens. If everybody's okay with, at least, at least proposing something.
I like it.
Okay, so I think the rest of it was just technical stuff.
It's just editorial, isn't it?
Editorial, right. Editorial. So.
So that finishes up for tonight.
That finishes up. So we, we removed the sign stuff for now. So that's it. So we'll work on these, um, we'll get the, we'll get some different language. Some of it could be, you know, more finalized than others. Some, we're still working on the language and we'll get back to you with a, a complete package.
All right.
All right.
Decent progress tonight.
Yeah, we need, thank you for sticking with this tonight. It's hard to do it when there's other applications.
No, it makes sense to do it as a workshop.
Yeah.
I didn't expect this.
Yeah.
But it explains why we got all those letters. Free water speaks, great development. All right. Oh, I guess we have a reporter chair, reporter commission. I don't know. I don't have anything else to say. Is anybody in the commission have any issues? Staff have anything else?
Yep.
All right. So I'll make a move, make a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Join the meeting. We have our next meeting on next Tuesday.
That's right.
Hmm.
And Thursday.
Is there much on that agenda? Other than the star item?
The star subdivision?
Right.
And we're not taking the sign back next week, net, yeah. Um, so that won't be on it. Um, and I don't think I have anything that's ready.
Okay.
Brooke.
No, I don't have anything else. Are you ready?
Okay.
Did tonight's meeting start at 6:30?
It did.
I, I apologize. I just, I can't, I was on at seven, so. Put, put me down late. Doc Mike, hey.
Oh, he's.
No, I, I was actually uh, taking a shower so that you could all see me tonight.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you for dressing. Good as it gets. Good night all.
Good night.
Good night.